Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call our board meeting back to order, please. The first item is to order closed meeting. Do I have a motion, please?
Set moved.
Set.
Been moved in second, a roll call, please.
Mr. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gaylord?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chairman Meadows?
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is certification of closed meeting, whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened in a closed meeting on this date pursuant to the affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-377 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia, hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in a closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Do you have a motion, please?
Set moved.
Set.
Been moved in second, a roll call, please.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gaylord?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Chairman Meadows?
Aye.
Set an aye.
The next item is an invocation, which I'll ask people to please rise and take a moment of silence and consider all the things that face our country today. And following that will be the Pledge of Allegiance by our current Administrator, Mr. Goodman.
I pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meadows.
Thank you. That's all right. I was looking for clay. I didn't know where you were.
I got a flashback from last week. The next item is a presentation, and it's a proclamation from Mr. Matt Hagan. And the Board of Supervisors will present Matt Hagan with a proclamation recognizing Mr. Hagan as a 2011 world champion, the full throttle drag racing funny car at the National Hot Rod Association. And we're very proud to have you here tonight and be able to recognize you for your accomplishments last year. And we have a little video we're going to watch, and I'd invite the Board members to please come down so we can present the proclamation, please.
Do we watch the video first?
Watch the video first.
We're going down.
Okay.
Okay.
Three hundred and twenty-two miles an hour.
Next question. Three hundred and twenty-two miles an hour.
I can look at that.
We have here a proclamation that reads, "In a regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors of Virginia of Montgomery, Virginia, held on the sixteenth day of November, 2011, at 6:30 PM, in Board Sanders, Montgomery County, Arizona, Washington, Virginia." The proclamation, "Matt Hagan, National Hot Rod Association, world champion." And whereas Matt Hagan, now named Lieutenant Captain Eddie Taylor from Enriner, where he lives, he's white, but he's opening up two children. And whereas, in addition to managing the five hundred and fifty-five car, Matt Hagan competes in the National Hot Rod Association Full Throttle Drag Racing Series. And whereas, Matt Hagan first competed in the National Hot Rod Association Full Throttle Drag Racing in 2008, which includes funny car, drag racing, car race. And whereas, in 2009, he raced in his first season in NHRA Full Throttle Drag Racing Series, hosting all finishes in Las Vegas and Charlotte. And whereas, in 2010, finished second for the championship of the NHRA NHRA Full Throttle Drag Racing Funny Car Competition. And whereas, he ran a qualifying for me in Charlotte in September, 2011. He became the first funny car rider in history to break four-second record in a first string three, and then five seconds in a thousand footer gun. And whereas, and another third person, Matt Hagan won the NHRA Full Throttle Drag Racing Series, world champion of North Carolina. And whereas, for the split into twenty-nine and share, he's second for such a dedicated and exceptional athlete who engages among the most talented and demanding tests of physical skill. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia, if the Board of Supervisors recognizes and acknowledges, Matt Hagan, their own accomplishments in the NHRA Full Throttle Drag Racing World Championship. Being further resolved, the original of this resolution, he presented Matt Hagan in the track, made one official record in Montgomery County, Virginia.
First of all, thank you guys for everything that you have done, to take the time to recognize what my team and myself has done for Christianburg and all of Montgomery County is huge. You know, to put ten guys together, with two crew chiefs and me as a driver, eight, you know, eight thousand horsepower over three hundred miles an hour, and try to get it right all the time, that can sometimes be a task. But, you know, getting it right is working hard, and that's what you guys do. And, you know, and being a lifetime member of Montgomery County, I've been able to see how prosperous you guys have made this county by working hard. And I just want to thank you, you know, for doing what you guys do. But, you know, hopefully we can work hard and continue to bring home championships and new world records to Christianburg and Montgomery County, just like you guys work hard every day. So thank you again. It's a true honor to accept this award here, and, you know, this is something I'm going to take back to my team. You know, we're going to share it and, you know, definitely cherish it as well. So thank you guys so much again. Appreciate it. Thank you so much. Thank you.
I know. Don't try to get the top.
Yeah, that's it. I'm going to show you something. You want to do a group photo?
Yeah.
Thank you, guys. Again.
That's a good way to start the evening. And I'll move along.
Didn't you say something about finishing the meeting tonight in 3.995 seconds?
If you want to, heading adjourned. I think we've got a little business we have to discuss.
Yes, we do.
So the next item is public hearings. And the following public hearing was advertised pursuant to law in the burbs of Verona Times on March 1st and March 8th, 2012. And it's considering rezoning amendment for Forest Hills at Bellevue. And Mr. Sandy, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It was a tough act to follow, but I'll try to get through this quickly. This is a request to change proper conditions, amend the proper statement for Forest Hills at Bellevue. This was a rezoning that was approved in March of 2005, and it had a master plan that was associated with it, and it also had a number of proper conditions associated with it. Just to kind of orient you where this development is, it's located on Route 114 in the western part of the county, about the 3200 block of Pepper's Ferry Road. It's basically across the street from Bellevue Elementary School. The entire property is, the property is shown in blue on the map. You can see most of the development, the seventy townhouse units are built up near the front of the property, and the remainder of the property is to be in open space. And that's just another view of the area. And you can kind of see this area here, which is a little extension. If you recall from the rezoning several years ago, this was to be an emergency access road. The main entrance to the development is over here, and this portion was to be used as an emergency access road. And Bellevue is kind of right across here, Bellevue Elementary School. This is the comprehensive plan map, the Village of Bellevue map, which shows this area as residential. So just briefly talk about the proposal that's before you tonight. All that's being requested is a request to remove some of the trails, the pedestrian trails that were part of the original master plan and proffered with the development. What the applicant is proposing is to remove about 730 linear feet of trail that runs behind a number of the units, and you'll see it in red on your maps. And the reason for that is it runs behind the units, which they don't like for security reasons, but another reason is just engineering-wise, the topography is very challenging through there. So they're requesting to remove those. Now, when staff reviewed this, staff suggested that maybe rather than just completely removing them, maybe there were some options where we could relocate some and kind of improve the development and meet some of our other plans for the Bellevue area. And we came up with a plan to kind of keep about 530 feet of those trails just placed in different locations, and I'll talk about those more here in a little bit. Again, this was an approval from March 2007, and it was for 70 units, and it had 17 proffered conditions associated with it. This was approved in March that same year. Two big plans were approved for the Bellevue area. One of those was the Bellevue Village Plan, which came after this rezoning was approved, and as well as the Village Transportation Links Plan, which has a number of different trails and pedestrian opportunities for the village that, again, came out after this plan was already approved. So what staff has done is tried to look at the vital plan and kind of make the original approved master plan kind of fit a little bit better with the vital plan since we were looking to change some of these trail locations. So this is just some information out of the vital plan where it talks about focusing on providing safe connections from existing and proposed residential areas to Bellevue Elementary. The elementary school is the focal point of the village, and there's some issues there, the high speeds on Route 114, the narrow shoulders, the signalized intersection with Prices Fork Road is challenging. But what the plan talks about is that trail systems throughout the village will provide a safer pedestrian access throughout the community. One of the other big points is traffic calming measures in front of the school will be critical for connecting future residential development to the north, which is this development, to the elementary school itself. So what staff tried to look at is what could we do to change some of these trails around, meet some of the goals of the vital plan. Staff and the PDC are currently working on a travel plan for Bellevue Elementary School as well. So this kind of fit in good with that plan and some of the planning we're doing there. So we wanted to try to make these things a little more coordinated and pull them together. So again, we looked at removing about 730 feet and putting back about five to 550 feet. The applicant, the elimination of approved trails as suggested by the applicant, along with the construction of a sidewalk and asphalt trail, will better serve the Village of Bellevue and the vital plan that we talked about. The Planning Commission heard this on the 14th of March, and the Planning Commission recommended denial of the request, and I'll get into that a little bit more. It was, we only had five members that night. It was a three-to-two vote, and I'll talk about why there was some dissension there and why there was a recommendation of denial. They felt like the proposal at that time failed to meet the goals of the vital plan and the village plans. At that time, they were not proposing a sidewalk to connect all the way to 114, and there was concern about that from the Planning Commission. The applicant didn't really want to put that trail in, didn't want to encourage children to come down to 114 if there was no crosswalk there in place. So there was some discussion, and then following the meeting later that week, the applicant came up with a revised proffer condition to put in that trail, but not until the crossing is put in place on Route 114. So this, again, this was after the Planning Commission's recommendation, so their recommendation had already been made to deny the request. So the applicant presented the revised proffer statement with that trail to connect to the school and other future village improvements. And then proffer number seven of the original proffers was modified to provide compliance with the new master plan that you have, showing that the red trails will be removed, the blue trails will be put in now instead of the red trails, and then the one green trail that's shown on your plan would go in at the time that the crosswalk is put in to provide access to the school. So here's the plan that you have in front of you. Again, the red trails are to be removed. As per this plan, the blue trails provide a little more connection within the development. What staff tried to look at too is if someone lived in the development, that they could actually walk the entire development and have a sidewalk or some sort of trail to make a big loop to continuously walk through the development. There are sidewalks and curves throughout the development. There's a recreation area back here in the back, which will also be connected. And then this blue trail will start the connection and then ultimately down the green trail out to 114 and to a future crosswalk. After receiving the revised proffers, the staff talked to the Planning Commission, because we had our second meeting this past Wednesday, just talked to them informally about what had been submitted, what had changed, and kind of got their opinion on what, how they would react to that. And the commission members stated that they would have supported the request if they would have had the proffer at that time in the revised master plan showing that connection down to 114. So those are the key points that I have, and I'll be happy to try to answer any questions Mr. Tuck was at our, I guess, both Planning Commission meetings, so he could also help me if, yes, sir.
One question. Where the green trail comes across 114, it seems like it goes right into the grassy area of Bellevue. Is there going to be, with this grant, some way to extend this walkway into the Bellevue side? It's almost like when you cross the street, you get to the edge of the road, and then it's grass there.
Yes.
Yeah, so.
Yes, the school travel plan does show where that trail would continue, right, basically to the front door of Bellevue, and provide access right to that. And then from there, the plan also shows where you could go off and go walk a trail around to the playground area at the school, or go around to the other side to where the car riders drop off.
Any other questions, the Board members?
I have one. As far as the funds to develop the green line, will they be held in trust? And so it takes two years to get the crosswalk approved. Will we know where those funds are at so we can go ahead and make sure that it's done?
At this point, it's a proffer condition that the applicant will do it at the time the crosswalk comes in. So at this point, what staff would do is, once the crosswalk's in place, we would send them a notice saying, "Per the proffer conditions, you're now required to complete this construction." And they're going to maintain ownership of the property. They rent the units, and they're the property manager of the property, so. But we do not, at this point, we do not have a letter of credit or something like that.
The only thing is, and I know sometimes people sell properties that they've developed and the like, and I want to make sure that it doesn't get lost at some point in time that it's sold or the like, that these folks would have.
Just add one thing, even if it was sold, the proffer runs with the land, so the current owner would then have that responsibility.
Would adopt.
Yeah, so whoever the owner is, has that responsibility to put it in. If they don't put it in at the time, as indicated by the proffer, then we can bring him, bring an action in court for zoning violation, ask the court to require it.
Okay.
Mr. Creed?
We didn't want to hold the letter of credit, because we just don't know how long.
And as someone whose kids went to Bellevue, I understand, I mean, there's playgrounds over there, there's ball courts, and if I was a kid across the street, I'm going to be going across the street no matter what, whether there's a crosswalk or there or not. So I'm hopeful that we'll be able to move forward on that fairly soon.
Mr. Creed?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions on this, and that has to do with, is there going to be any kind of a signal light there to stop traffic where kids can go across that street?
It wouldn't be part of this development, but what we're proposing is part of the grant application that we may eventually submit, is to have like a pedestrian activated signal. So it won't be a light that's there, you know, red all the time, but it would be a signalized, when somebody comes to the crosswalk, they would push a button, which would make the lights activate before crossing. So there won't be a, you know, a traffic light, so to speak, like at the intersection of Prices Fork and 114, but there would be some sort of a signalized crossing there.
Okay, and another thing there, I take it that just a little farther out the road there is the main entrance?
The main entrance to this development?
To this development?
Yes, sir, that's right. You're the main entrance, and then the...
It looks like there's some, some kind of a divide.
There's a little bit of painted median there.
Yeah, there's something there that, just from looking at it, I would think that a site where that comes out to the road would be better, because they can at least go halfway and get a safe spot than it is to try to have children go all the way across that other two lanes of road, two lanes of traffic. I don't know, but it just appears to me that if we got a, while we're getting it, we ought to try to get it right and make it as safe as we possibly could for kids.
Well, the proposal at the, at the front of the school does have a safety median where you would cross half of the road, and then you'd have an area in between, and then you'd cross the other half. So it does kind of meet that. And the other reason we didn't look at putting it down at the entrance was there's so many turning movements there, people coming in and out, and then people going into the school. If you've been by that school at closing time, there's people sometimes lined out into 114, so we tried to, we want to make sure we kind of eliminated pedestrians in that area, so we wanted to move them further.
I understand that, and I'm not against what it's at. I'm just against the fact that this divide doesn't come back there to encompass.
We plan to extend that.
You know, if that's, would come back and encompass that area, then that would do what I want to know.
Yeah, that's exactly what we had planned.
Mr. President?
Mr. Sandy, this is just a regular flat crosswalk, you know, with little painted stripes on it that kids are going to walk across?
Well, unfortunately, I didn't bring a picture of it. In the vital plan, there's actually a drawing of what this might look like. There would be a median area, there would be some landscaping, there would actually be some curving there. So you'd come across into kind of a safety area in the median and then cross on over, and then there would be the signalized intersection, but it would not be a raised crosswalk or a bridge or anything like that.
What about speed limit there?
Well, one of, one of the vital plan proposals is to reduce the speed limit in Bellevue, and what we would like to do is, I'm working on a request right now to the Transportation Safety Commission to request that VDOT reduce that speed limit. We tried several years ago, you might recall, and it was not granted at that time because they said there's not enough development in the area. So now we're going to try again to try to get that reduced. During school time, I think it goes down to 25, if I'm not mistaken.
Not unless it's flashing, right?
Yeah.
Only when it's flashing.
Just during school time, correct.
Now, are you going to have enough signage or signals far enough back that cars, even if they don't reduce the speed limit, but if they do reduce it, so that cars will know that children are crossing the road?
Yes. And that was a big concern of the Planning Commission as well, about crossing on this road. So yes, there has to be several different things that need to happen with the signage and the speed limit and those sorts of things before, you know, I think we're ready to put in a crosswalk through there.
Well, I just hope if we have kindergarten children there, that the parents are going to be especially cautious, because children don't think, I mean, they think, but they don't think. In other words, they have their minds that young, just where they want to go. As Chris was bringing out the idea of the playgrounds there and what have you, you know, really and truly, I read all this, but it really scares me to death to think that you've got kids from the age of five on up, perhaps crossing this road. It really does bother me. But I, I'm at a loss, I don't have anything to offer as a substitute, but I'd just say, I would have my heart right here in my throat all the time, because some people who are, who drive down this road, they're going to try to make that stoplight. I've seen it, that happened a number of different times across Walton Road there and Prices Fork. I don't know, just worries me, because I'm not sure that children are going to know to punch the button to have people cross.
I hope it be a parent is with them or semi-responsible older person.
Oh, going to have a police there in the morning when the school's open and when it closes?
At school time, there is a police officer who works there, Bellevue, and he expressed a lot of the same concerns, and there would be, if a crosswalk did go in, there would be some sort of crossing guards also. We also talked about, in the vital plan, about putting, I don't want to call them like rumble strips, but putting something on the pavement on Route 114 just to, not really, not only because of the crosswalk, but just to kind of say, "You're entering the village, slow down."
Let's slow it down.
And then some additional signage.
Yeah, I think sometimes the rumble strips help. You know, I know on a couple of roads in Bob'sburg where we have some rumble strips, the people in trucks and SUVs and all, they don't even feel the rumble strip. in trucks and SUVs and all, they don't even feel the rumble strip like I do in model vehicles, so, you know, but something that would indicate that there's...
We're working on the all, the travel plan for Auburn as well.
Yes.
That's another challenging one with Route 8.
Yes.
These two primary routes are challenging to get students and people across.
Mr. Brown?
One quick comment. Anything that's done out there, it's got to be an improvement. I don't like kids get across now.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, so anything that's done out there has got to be an improvement for that area. That's all I wanted to say.
There's already close to 20 kids already living there.
Just crossing the road there.
They're very, they're very few homes there right now.
It's 20 kids.
I'm patient.
Ms. Biggs?
Okay, this is just an observation, okay? In Blacksburg on Prices Fork Road, there is this thing that goes across the four lanes, and it's, and this, these signs go off, and they start doing yellow when somebody starts to cross. And just an observation, when it was first put in, people were going through their, like, 'cause they didn't even notice the signs, but now that it's been up a while, people are stopping for the students to cross, but they were talking about college students, you know, crossing. I don't know, I, I can't, I'm, I'm sort of with them, on 114, I mean, there's, I mean, not to be disrespectful, but there's some drivers on 114 that don't really respect the speed limit at all.
Mm-hmm.
And, I don't know, but I guess, Mr. Brown, you have a good point about anything would be better than it is now.
Yeah, it's gonna be.
But it is a very scary proposition, because the first time a child gets hit, or a child gets killed, we're gonna feel awful if we were involved in trying to, we're trying to make something better, but at the same time, it also is gonna encourage more people to use it, so I don't know.
Yeah, it's been a challenge. We've met with the, the school folks at Bellevue several times, and worked out the, the travel plan, and lots of different things, so, we'll, we'll see. We still have a long ways to go before we actually would, would construct a crosswalk, but that's what's currently in the vital plan, and that's part of the school travel plan that will go forward to VDOT too.
Anybody else? Mr. Gabriel?
Just a quick question, Steve. When you, you said that you brought it back with this, this renewed plan to the planning commission, and they indicated that they would have supported this, did you give a sense of, does that mean like overwhelming support, or was there still some, some hesitation?
The impression I got was that they were all in favor of, with the revised project.
Everyone who voted against it said that they would have changed their position had this been the original proposal that was on the planning commission.
Thank you.
And I think Steve or Mark are here to speak as well.
And any comments from the developers? Mr. Simone?
Good evening. I'm Steve Simone, the Ballers and Associates, we're representing Forest Hills, Mark Kinzer. I did have a little color map, Ms. Perkins?
Yeah, I have that on, right now, we brought it from you.
Kinda showing what, what Mr. Sandy was talking about. A lot of the conversation that I'm hearing reminds me back five years ago, when we were talking about this, and there was a lot of discussion about trail systems and, and that's what, you know, that type of thing, as we were looking at this, at this proposal originally. And one thing, just to let everybody, make sure everybody's aware of, I'm not sure if it's gone up yet, but we do have a bus, a bus shelter right down here at the intersection, because that was one of the things that I believe the school system had said, nobody lets their kids walk to school anymore. So, you know, even though we're a few hundred feet away, we do have a bus shelter right here that the kids can use on the sidewalk to get down to it. And I think at the planning commission meeting the other night, there was just a, we hadn't got that far into the discussion with staff and with the planning commission, and when, I think we heard, they were saying, they heard what we were saying, that, you know, we didn't wanna put the trail in right now and lead them right out to a road that doesn't have a crosswalks, but this county certainly wanted something in place, but when that happens, you know, we can do something. So with Mr. Kinzer's, you know, authorization, he went ahead and said, you know, that'll go in at whatever point this, this trail connection, or the crosswalk, I'm sorry, goes in. As far as the trails, we showed back here again, it was to provide a little bit more interconnectivity, and, and again, there are certain things, even though as, as long as I've done this, that look good on paper, that just don't work out in field. So we did have some technographic issues, and with Mr. Kinzer's, property management team looked at this after the plans were approved, they said, you know, do we really want people walking around in the backyards? So I think all in all, the cooperation we've had with staff, and the, the plan that we're at right now with the blue and the green, I think certainly makes it a better project. But I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have questions, Mr. Simone? Thanks, Steve. All right, is there anybody in the public who would like to address this public hearing? If so, please come forward, state your name and address, and I have five minutes to speak. Seeing no one, we'll close this public hearing. The next item on the agenda is public address. I'd just like to ask that people who speak at our public address today direct their comments to the board, and that you'll know, please, that there is no communication between the board and the public speakers at this time. If there's any questions that need to be answered, our secretary will take notice and get back to the people. So please clearly state your name and address prior to starting to speak. four people signed up at this moment, and Ms. Susan Marmegas, I'm sorry, oh, Lindsey
My name is Lindsey West, and I live at 607 Giles Road in Blacksburg. Chairman Politas and members of the Board of Supervisors. My husband Dave and I have lived and been residents of Montgomery County and taxpayers in Montgomery County for 50 years now, as hard as that seems to, to believe for us. In that time, we have invested our time and our money and received rich dividends in the quality of life in the county. We support the 87 cent real property tax rate and commend the board for accepting the county administrator's recommendation and advertising that rate. The prosperity of Montgomery County depends on adequate funds for education, public safety, wise capital investment, and a range of quality services for all citizens. In recent years, the county has had a relatively low tax rate, especially compared to neighboring Roanoke County. The rate was made possible by state and federal money, the increasing value of property in the county, the use of reserves, and inadequate spending on many items. However, with the sharp decrease of state and federal funds, the large capital needs, and the growth of the county, the present tax rate is no longer sufficient. We can blame the Commonwealth of Virginia for the problem, but the welfare of Montgomery County is our responsibility. These are our citizens who have expectations of quality education, a safe place to live, and the diversity of, of support and services the county provides. I am glad to pay the local taxes required, and I consider, which I consider a wise investment for my family and for the county, and will adjust my monthly budget for the increased amount. I was in your position 25 years ago, and I know the difficult decisions you have to make, but I also know the rewards of helping people and of providing the necessary resources for the prosperity of the county and the well-being of its residents. We urge you to approve the advertised rate of 87 cents when you adopt the budget for the next year. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I have coffee, so I'll get it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Chair Politas and the distinguished members of the Board of Supervisors, thank you for the opportunity to come speak to you this evening. My name is Susan West Marmegas, and I live at 305 Rucker Road in Blacksburg. Tonight I speak to you as a mother of two young children, one of whom attends public school in the county. I also speak on behalf of a group of parents, and there's, and some of them are here with me tonight, from Harding Avenue Elementary School in Blacksburg. I was born and raised in this county and attended kindergarten at Harding Avenue the year it opened, so I go way back in this county as well. I grew up in this community and attended public school all the way through graduating from Blacksburg High School. This system prepared me well for college and my professional training in public health. While I left home to pursue my education and career goals, I always kept this tight-knit community close to my mind and to my heart. Five years ago, my husband and I decided to come back here, a decision to return in large part because of public education here in this county that would be available to our children. This fall, my oldest daughter started kindergarten on Harding Avenue, and I found myself walking through the halls of my old school, remembering the foundation of my own education, being in a school that really hasn't changed much in the years since I was there as a kindergartner. Since starting kindergarten, my daughter has learned how to read, she's learned how to write sentences, she's learned how to add and subtract, and her love of learning, I give credit to her teachers and to the school system at Harding Avenue. The education that she and so many others receive in this county is of outstanding quality. As those of you who would know who have been other places, there are many children who can't go to public high schools, public kindergartens, and their parents are forced to put them in private schools, and many of them can't afford to send their children to private school. We have invested in this county so that all of our children can go to public school and get a great public education. We are so blessed to have outstanding public education available to all children. Our schools and our teachers are dedicated to giving everyone a chance to learn. They invest in our children, even for those who don't have those opportunities to learn at home. They offer free breakfast and lunch to kids whose parents don't have sufficient resources. They teach our children how to make good choices, and I know my five-year-old really needs that. And they offer safe places for our children to play and to grow. I'm a product of this county's historic investment in our kids. We must dig deep in our pockets as residents and as leaders to continue this investment now and into the future. What better way to leave a legacy for our future generations? Our kids and their kids expect no less of us. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Valerie Phillips Downing.
I don't wanna be redundant, but I too support the 12 cent increase, and I realize the importance of a public school education. I too am a product of the public school system. And I was deeply saddened when I heard about the, the people who stood up and said that, that they did not support the tax increase, and they just came up with excuse after excuse. And a wise person once said, "If you really wanna accomplish something, you will find a way, and if you don't, you'll find an excuse." And that's exactly what, what I believe that they're doing. And I too know that the average cost of a house in this area is about $190, $98,000, and so that's basically a $20 a month increase in what they all have to pay. And just looking at my budget, I know that I can come up with it, and again, if you really wanna do something, you'll find a way, and I'd like to applaud you guys for, for taking that step, which may not be a very popular step, but sometimes to accomplish great things, you have to, to make decisions that aren't very popular. Thank you.
Thank you.
Valerie Phillips Downing?
Yeah, what's her address?
Downing.
Address?
Oh, I was forgetting my address.
Oh, your address.
My, um, is Valerie Phillips Downing, and my address is 3850 Field Crest Drive, and that's in Rhino.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if you'll state your address also, please.
Pardon?
If you'll state your address, I didn't ask the last person to do that, so...
My name's John Gill. I live at 2037 Huffill Road in Pilot. I recommended on, for some previous occasions, that the, as the school board required oversight. The budget submissions are insufficient, and they provide no substantial documentation of any category of money required. They utilized money in the 2010, $800,000, they, and they gave us, they gave the teachers a bonus, they used, and then find out that $800,000 was required to go ahead and fix up safe fire and safety violations that had been in the previous year, which would've been the $800,000 that they gave for the teachers. The, the school board asked for money for new computers and buses, no buses were, were purchased, and only a few computers. Again, the money was used for our teachers' bonuses. Best Buy, Kristenburg, donated a quarter of a million dollars to Montgomery County Public Schools to be used towards technology updates, and we don't, I don't know what was done with that money, but I understand that they said, that, an email from you all said that the, that they, that the school board can go ahead and do pretty much what they want, what I read from here, but if they can do pretty much what they want, they can, you might as well just give them a pot of money, and they can spend it whatever they want to. And I think that they should be held to account for every, every category that they have, so that they, if you need to, put a breakdown into the, and that, of the money that they, that you allocate to them, so that, they, they should be held accountable to that. In other words, if you, if you allocate money for, for buses, that it should be used for buses, no other stuff, no other area. And they, they just went ahead and took your money, actually my money, and used it whatever they wanted to. There was some, so, you know, I think that they need some kind of oversight, however, however you need to do it legally, to, to make sure that when they, when they were given money, that they apply it to the area in which they have. When you see a budget come on down here, you see transportation. Transportation has a lot of different areas, so, anyway, you should, we should, we should have an accounting there, and if they do wrong, then, you know, do whatever actions are required. They, they went, and the school board had a, they put a high school in East Montgomery, it's only three miles from the Roanoke County line. That school was way out, and it wasn't, wasn't used as part of any of the redistricting that they did. Why? Because it was too far. So they, they brought to this board a, a high school that's essentially not available to anybody else but the, the few people that are down there. There's 320 students in that high school. They're doing the same thing to Auburn. Auburn is out there in, next to Floyd, might as well be in Floyd County, and, and it's only 400, it's actually less than 400 students in that school, in the high school. So, and again, they were, they were excluded from the redistricting because they think, because the rest of the board, or I guess the school board, thinks that they're too far in. And then we, once, Blacksburg once was adamant about a, a school, if they want a school, a really fancy school, well, let them become a, a, a city, like Rapper did. Rapper's a city, they handle their own school. They're, they're tied into a town position where, where the county has to go ahead and provide support for their, for the schools that they want. And, and there's, there's five of them in the, in the Blacksburg area, five, five of you people, and five of the school board that, that vote, you know, for the Blacksburg area. We only have two, and so we're out, basically out gone, but we're, it's all supposed to be for the, for all, all the students here, and not just a few. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Politas, board members, and Mr. Meadows. I would like to begin, first of all, by thanking Mr. our children, for our future, and support this tax increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to address the board in this public address? Please come forward and say your name and address, and I'll have five more minutes.
Good evening. My name is Bill Murray. I'm at 401 Givens Lane in Blacksburg. The March 12th, 2012 fireworks display here at the Board of Supervisors meeting was quite impressive. From my seat in the audience, what I saw was that 90% of the county residents don't favor a tax increase. About 10% of the residents favor that increase, and those residents all seem to live in Blacksburg. They believe that they will see direct benefit from the tax hike by getting a new high school. As for the other 90%, they're not interested in more tax. All they see are unpaved roads, unsafe roads, and a promise that would probably be paid decades ago. They do not care about who is responsible for those roads, state cuts, where the money's coming from, or that the county says they don't have the money. All they know is that they have a broken promise, and now they're expected to pay more taxes. You can expect them to return to the board meeting with a loud vengeance, I'm sure, judging by those that were here. Who knows how they'll express themselves when they return, but they will be irate when they return, that's guaranteed. Goldie Alderman of Old Sora lives on a very dangerous road out in Pilot. The road needs to be wide. Neighbors with four-wheel drives now plow the road in the winter. In the summer, the roads are very dusty. Two school buses are not able to pass on that road without one going off into the ditch. In addition to that, there's a 50-foot drop with no guardrail, just waiting for an accident to happen. Meanwhile, bonds were issued without a referendum, tax increases being proposed without a referendum. The schools had a $1.26 million carryover last year that they were allowed to carry over without justification. Ms. Alderman and the other residents out in Pilot are told there's simply no money for the county to fix their roads. The $1.26 million that was carried over in the school budget, apparently schools didn't need, would have fixed those roads. And with the tax increase, the residents out in Pilot get to keep their dangerous roads, and Blacksburg gets a new high school. Whatever happened is safety first. Third, the other 90% of the county would not pass the referendum on either the bond issue or the tax increase. Should the needs of the few then outweigh the safety of the many that use those roads? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to address the board?
Good evening. My name is Julie Snyder, and I live at 1805 Takahoe Drive in Reiner, Virginia. I'm speaking tonight because I have conflict Thursday night, and I'm not sure I can get here. I was dismayed by the Tea Party-type telephone call that I received last week. I was also dismayed by the editorial that was in the paper that was trying to get the county to regress from the direction they were moving, to build not just a school in Blacksburg, but a school in Auburn or Reiner, as well as renovate another for Auburn. Auburn parents very much want those schools for all the communities and are very willing to pay the taxes, as you've already heard from other Reiner residents. I hope that it's impossible to go backwards on any of this legally, and if there is any wiggle room on that, I hope ethically everybody on this board will support all the decisions that have been going on for the last year and a half to make this happen. I want to strongly encourage that this board supports Montgomery County Public Schools by approving the full 12-cent increase, if not more. Without this, we regress to a 2007 level of spending for schools. That's just unbelievably poor. Our students deserve way more than this. Whether it's a kindergartner, a sixth grader, a senior, it will impact every single student in this county next year. Don't let that happen. This county has gone through feast or famine over the last 25 years, from what I can tell, about the building of schools. Operating budgets, it seems it's more famine than feast usually. I've been involved in schools in Auburn at every level, grade school, middle school, high school. I don't see, well, grade school, middle school, a lot, high school less. I haven't seen waste in Auburn Elementary or Auburn Middle. We need to break that cycle, and we need continuous, steady funding for schools, and then we won't be in a predicament like we are now, where we have to increase taxes this much to build schools because there are crises. Consider that we've actually paid very low taxes, in my opinion, for years. If we would just steadily increase a penny or two every year or so, we would have been to this tax rate, we would already have these schools that we need, and we'd also have operating budgets that the children deserve. Spend it on education now, or raise taxes in the future and pay for jails, pay for legal fees, pay for social services, pay for cleaning up meth labs. You've got a choice. You can invest now, or you can pay later. Remember that the kids that will stay, the ones that are, you know, maybe struggling, they're the kids that will stay, and they're the kids that will fall, and they're the kids that will cost money. They deserve better than that. It's not okay to just absorb the cuts and have our kids go without experienced teachers, without important classes, and without necessary supplies, because state officials and county residents want to play partisan politics. Our county is better than that. I need you guys to do the right thing, to invest in our children, and to set the tax rate at that 12-cent increase or even higher. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Snyder.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to address the board?
My name is Jennifer Mengele, and I live at 4520 Blue Heron Drive, and that's out in Reiner. Obviously, a lot of us have been involved in this process over the last couple of years. A lot of people have done a lot of work. You know, there were choices in the beginning, repair, build, do this, do that, and, you know, those decisions have all been made. That work has all been done, you know, whether you agree with it or not. That is the process, the path that we've taken. Contracts have been signed, the bonds have been issued, and all of that effort for the capital projects requires, I think, at least a 10-cent tax increase to cover those obligations we've already made, the process we've already been through. So, I know a lot of people, the questions are, you know, what if? What if that 10 cents is not approved? What happens? I hope we don't find out. I hope that's not an option, because at this point, those schools are needed. If they're not built, what are the alternatives? Does someone else have a better answer? Where were they during the last two years when we were all going through this work and going through this process? So, I also support the full 12-cent increase for the schools. I know, as Ms. Snyder said, you know, going back to 2007 level for operating budgets for schools is not acceptable. I just came from a middle school PTO meeting where the teachers are begging us to buy paper for them because they're out of money. This was the same issue last year. And I know the PTO is there to help fund different things for school requests, but I never really thought it would be for something as basic as paper. So, there are issues in the schools. They don't have the funding they need, and it's hard, you know, prices for everything in our daily lives are going up, and it's the same for the schools, but the budget has been going backwards. I don't mean to, in any way, say this isn't going to be hard for some people. For some of us, we can more easily absorb a tax increase than others. But I feel like it's come to the point where we don't have a choice. If we keep getting further and further behind, it is going to cost us more in the end, and we need to fund public education. We need to give our students the tools that they need to succeed. We need to give the teachers the tools that they need to succeed in educating those children. So, I'm in Reiner, and I do support the tax increase for all the schools in Montgomery County. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board?
My name is Jennifer Mengele, and I live at 4520 Blue Heron Drive, and that's out in Reiner. Obviously, a lot of us have been involved in this process over the last couple of years. A lot of people have done a lot of work. You know, there were choices in the beginning, repair, build, do this, do that, and, you know, those decisions have all been made. That work has all been done, you know, whether you agree with it or not. That is the process, the path that we've taken. Contracts have been signed, the bonds have been issued, and all of that effort for the capital projects requires, I think, at least a 10-cent tax increase to cover those obligations we've already made, the process we've already been through. So, I know a lot of people, the questions are, you know, what if? What if that 10 cents is not approved? What happens? I hope we don't find out. I hope that's not an option, because at this point, those schools are needed. If they're not built, what are the alternatives? Does someone else have a better answer? Where were they during the last two years when we were all going through this work and going through this process? So, I also support the full 12-cent increase for the schools. I know, as Ms. Snyder said, you know, going back to 2007 level for operating budgets for schools is not acceptable. I just came from a middle school PTO meeting where the teachers are begging us to buy paper for them because they're out of money. This was the same issue last year. And I know the PTO is there to help fund different things for school requests, but I never really thought it would be for something as basic as paper. So, there are issues in the schools. They don't have the funding they need, and it's hard, you know, prices for everything in our daily lives are going up, and it's the same for the schools, but the budget has been going backwards. I don't mean to, in any way, say this isn't going to be hard for some people. For some of us, we can more easily absorb a tax increase than others. But I feel like it's come to the point where we don't have a choice. If we keep getting further and further behind, it is going to cost us more in the end, and we need to fund public education. We need to give our students the tools that they need to succeed. We need to give the teachers the tools that they need to succeed in educating those children. So, I'm in Reiner, and I do support the tax increase for all the schools in Montgomery County. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the board? Seeing no one, we'll close this public address. Thank you very much for your words this evening. The next item on the agenda is the addendum, and we do not have one this evening.
Sir.
Following that, the consent agenda, do I have a motion, please?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Roll call, please.
And that is that I can't vote on it, because it appears that I was, me and you and Mr. Muffo were absent on what we're going to vote on under it. I don't remember being absent, but it says we were, so.
For the minutes of the meeting, is that where?
Come on. For the minutes in the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying? Yeah. Probably an absentee.
Obviously, we were, but I don't recall it.
I don't recall either, but, I mean, Mr. Creed, I think you could have, you could vote and then conditionally put that vote stating that, according to the minutes, you weren't there, and if you weren't there, then you don't, your vote doesn't vouch for any accuracy of those minutes.
Well, this has the minutes of two meetings, one for the November 28th, which it says I wasn't there, and then for December 12th, I believe it is, that I was there, so fifty-fifty.
It'd just be for that November meeting. Or you could just abstain if you wanted to.
I'm abstaining from the November. I don't remember missing a meeting, but I guess abstains are possible.
Yeah, do it there.
All right.
You also, Jim.
I also.
You also would miss that meeting.
Yeah. I don't recall it. I might recall that, though. I did miss one last year.
I think it was the one I chaired at.
Yeah, that's right. You did chair for me. So, I'll have to exempt myself from that part of the meeting, too.
Okay.
Okay? All right. Roll call, please.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
For the November 28th meeting, I cannot vote. However, for the December 12th meeting, that is on here, I'm an aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Chair Polynas?
And I follow Mr. Creed's lead on the 28th, but I was here for the 12th. Aye.
And he's set an odds of doing it, and he's up to St. Michael's November 28th minutes.
All right. The next item is proclamation for the National Library Week.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? Mr. Gabriel?
No, go ahead.
I was just saying, I'm glad we're doing it and recognizing the libraries, because they're an invaluable asset to our county and its residents.
And I just wanted to second that. Having served on the library board before here, I know how well the libraries are run and what exceptional work the director and the staff and the board do to make do with very little. So, the county is very well served by the libraries.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I would echo that, you know, really, to an awfully lot of people, the library is one of the most important things that we have out there, especially in the last couple, three years, folks that didn't have a computer at home could go to the library and try to find a job, and they've been heavily, heavily utilized down my way, and I don't know, from what I can tell, they're that way county-wide, so I think they're a very important organization.
I also feel the same way. I'm amazed when I go by the Christiansburg Library, and a couple of times I've been over in the Blacksburg area and down in Meadowbrook area, those places are booming and very, very available for the community, so. Okay? Roll call, please.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Ms. Figs?
Aye.
Chair Polynas?
Aye.
Okay, the next item is the county attorney's report.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. One item to discuss with the board tonight. I received a request on Friday after the agenda went out from the Montgomery County Electoral Board asking this board if they would consider a temporary precinct change for the E1 polling place, which is St. Michael's Lutheran Church, for the June 12th, 2012 primary, and be only for that primary election. The reason being that Bible schools have been, vacation Bible schools have been scheduled for the church during that period of time, so they would not be able to host the election. The Electoral Board has consulted with the school board superintendent, Ms. Blackburn, and she's, they've received permission from her to use Kips Elementary as a temporary polling place for E1. Kips is outside of E1, but it's within the, it's within one mile of E1, so it'd be an allowable precinct place on a temporary basis. What we need to do is that, before we can do any precinct change, we have to adopt an ordinance. Before we can adopt an ordinance, we have to hold a public hearing, a public hearing on the proposed change, and so what I'm asking the board tonight, in order to speed up the process, is to ask the board to adopt a resolution scheduling a public hearing for Monday, April 23rd, on an ordinance that would temporarily change the E1 precinct polling place from St. Michael's Lutheran to Kips Elementary for the June primary election only. And then, once you, once we hold a public hearing and we adopt the ordinance, then we have to receive approval from Justice Department, so that's why time is of the essence, so we got to get this done as soon as possible. So, I'd ask the board if they'd consider a motion adopting that resolution.
I'm going to make that motion that we advertised, and under the time constraints that we conduct the public hearing on the 23rd.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion from the board?
Can I just ask two quick questions?
Yes, sir.
First, just to be clear, this is a one-time only, only for the primary election, and then the November general election will be back at the regular polling place?
Yes, sir. It'll go right back, yes, sir.
Okay.
And I left one thing out. We'll work with Ruth, and we'll get the word out. We'll do a, we'll do a press release and make sure everybody in that E1 district knows that that polling place has been moved for the primary.
Yeah, that was going to be my second question, so.
And since it's involving primarily a senatorial Republican race, correct? That's what the primary that you're discussing is going to come up with?
Oh, I think Democratic.
Is it also Democratic?
Yeah, Keynes.
Okay, Keynes as well. Maybe contact both party leaders, so they can put it on their websites, and maybe a link to the county would be helpful to both parties.
That's a good idea. In fact, we'll send them this proposed ordinance, and we'll go ahead and send that as well, and advise them on a public hearing on the 23rd.
Won't the electoral board be doing some kind of information, too?
We'll check on that.
Because wouldn't that be part of their process, since they're moving the?
Actually, they asked us to move it, and then we do all the process, basically. And then we get Justice Department approval, and part of that approval process is, they ask you what kind of outreach have you done?
So, if this all goes through, though, wouldn't they put it on their website or something? I mean?
We'll check on that.
Okay.
But I'm sure we'll...
the public hearing on the 23rd.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion from the board?
Can I just ask two quick questions?
Yes, sir.
First, just to be clear, this is, this is a one-time only, only for the primary election, and then the November general election will be back at the regular polling place?
Yes, sir. It'll go right back, yes, sir.
Okay.
And I left one thing out. We'll work with Ruth, and we'll get the word out. We'll do a, we'll do a press release and make sure everybody in that E1 district knows that that polling place has been moved for the primary.
Yeah. That was going to be my second question, so.
And since it's involving primarily a senatorial Republican race, correct? That's what the primary that you're discussing is going to come up with?
Oh, I think Democratic.
Is it also Democratic?
Yeah, Keynes.
Okay, Keynes as well.
Yeah.
Maybe contact both party leaders so they can put it on their websites, and maybe a link to the county would be helpful to both parties.
That's a good, in fact, we'll send them this proposed ordinance, and we'll go ahead and send that as well, and advise them on a public hearing on the 23rd.
Won't the Electoral Board be doing some kind of information, too?
We'll check on that.
Because wouldn't that be part of their process, since they're moving the?
Actually, they asked us to move it, and then we do all the process, basically. And then we get Justice Department approval, and part of that approval process is they ask you what kind of outreach have you done.
So if this all goes through, though, wouldn't they put it on their website or something? I mean?
We'll check on that.
Okay.
But I'm sure we'll put it on our website.
Yeah.
Just add one more thing. We did this not too long ago with Shawsville, when they were renovating the school, and it was a temporary, I believe it was a primary election as well, because they were renovating the school during the summer months, and so we've done this before.
Anyone else? Do we have a motion? Do we have a second? Roll call, please.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Tuck?
Aye.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Chair Polis?
Aye.
Set house.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And the next item is our county administrator's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things real quick. First, I wanted to thank the board for their thoughts and well wishes with my daughter's illness, and I'll certainly keep you posted on how that situation's going. Also, wanted to mention to you that, in case you didn't remember, our budget public hearing is this Thursday night, beginning at 6:00. We have two public hearings. One is on the advertised tax rate, and the other public hearing is on the fiscal year 12, 13 budget, but that begins at 6:00 on Thursday back here in this boardroom. I wanted to check with the board to see if you were interested in scheduling a budget work session before the PSA meeting on Monday, April 2nd. The reason I ask that is normally at the public hearing on Thursday evening, we don't have a work session for discussion for the budget. That sole purpose of the meeting is for the public hearings. Then our next regular board meeting is scheduled for Monday, April 9th, and we'll certainly have that as an item on the agenda on the 9th. And then, we're scheduled to have a special meeting on Monday, the 16th, to vote on the budget. So if we don't do a budget, if we don't do a work session next Monday night, you've really only got one more scheduled meeting where you'd have an opportunity to discuss the budget. So, wanted to put that out there as an option for you to think about, and if you're interested in doing that, we'll certainly, certainly schedule that. PSA meets at 7:00. We could probably start at 5:30 or 6:00 with a work session if you wanted to do that.
Anybody want to consider it? Something we should email back to Mr. Metta's if you want to think about it? A day or two?
We've got to meet sometime, so. One's as good as anything.
Well, and I just have this feeling there's going to be some discussion on the budget. I didn't know if you wanted to have it all on the 9th, or have an opportunity to have some time before the session on the 2nd. So, that's certainly the board's call, and outside of that, Mr. Chairman, I don't have anything else.
I would be in favor of like a 6:00 work session. So, I was planning on being here early because the 4H is having their reception that night anyway.
That's right.
So, stop by there for a little bit, and then come over here. That'd be okay with me.
My only problem would be is an hour and a half.
No, there's seven of us, and by the time we all talk.
That's what I'm saying, is an hour and a half.
That's, you know, nine, eight minutes. I'm a history major, not a math major, but that's not a lot of time for each one of us to really even flesh out.
The other option is after the PSA meeting. I don't, I have no idea what's on the PSA agenda.
Perhaps we could move the PSA meeting up.
To 6:00?
To 6:00. And?
Do a work session at 7:00.
Then do a work session after the PSA.
That's, that's a good idea.
That'd be fine.
Then we'll make our own voices, however, if we want to.
Do we have to notify the public at any length of time about PSA?
No, the timeframe is when the board is notified. So, if you guys decide to do what you want, what was just recommended by Mr. Creed, then we would notify the press as soon as possible.
Let me ask, just throw this out here, and again, I'm new, but I think part of, and I'm just wondering, if we meet and we do a lot of things at the PSA meeting, instead of doing it on the 16th, and we work through some of the issues and questions we have, you know, we got to be, as far as the sunshine clause, I wouldn't mind seeing us getting an A. And that way, you know, the public can see where we're doing and how we're working through things if we do do it on the 16th. Now, at the same time, if there's input from the staff that we can get that helped all of us come to, and maybe talking with one another is going to help us get there. But if we do it at the, after the PSA meeting, is that, does the public get to see how we're all coming to our decisions?
Have it. Yeah.
I know it's open, but at the same time, with this short of a notice, we're still talking, we're talking about Monday, you know, a week from now, does that give the general public enough opportunity to see what, and how we're coming to our decisions?
Yes. What is the alternative?
I don't know. And part of this, you know, Craig did do his best to try to get us together in the weekends between all of us, just didn't work out, myself included, in trying to meet beforehand. But I just don't know that it, doing it now, I don't want there to even be a perception that, well, we're going to meet and really make the decision the Monday before, or 14 days before, and we're only going to give the public a week's notice that, and there will be some, that will have that perception.
But when you put it as a work session, right? It's not making a decision.
Right.
This is a work session for us to discuss things, if you, if we have questions.
Okay.
So we're not, you know, put things off later. It's a public meeting. Public's invited. It's generally no more notice than we give any other time, and?
I'm with this, I admit, so.
We're very possibly are going to have questions that we want staff to come back and give us answers on.
Right, well, and?
And that's what we want to air out. Make sure that he's got an opportunity to?
And candidly, that's how the second actually came up to start with, because one of the concerns was if, when we meet on the 9th in our regular meeting and have a work session, if you guys have a ton of questions, that's a lot of information that you got to sort through on the 16th when you're scheduled to vote. So, that was the reason for thinking ahead a little, too.
Excuse me?
Ms. Perkins?
Does the board have, I mean, does the county, because you'll have to refresh my mind, have any vacation time around the Easter break at all?
No, ma'am.
Because, okay, the second, if we have it, then that is the beginning of Holy Week for those of us who, who celebrate that. But if, if we have a meeting at the beginning of that week, it would probably be an okay thing, like on the 2nd or the 3rd.
Well, and again, the reason we were thinking that is we knew that, you know, if the PSA has business that night, that's their normal night for their PSA meeting, too, so. We'll certainly be here whenever you guys need us to be here.
Ms. Brown?
I think we can do two things. They look at this, even if we started on the 2nd and went a couple hours, we can continue that to the 9th. So, there would be two sessions. If we don't get April 2nd, all the questions answered, we can decide to quit, 9:30, 10: whatever, and then we can pick back up on it on the 9th to top any loose ends, answer any questions that emanate out of the second meeting that if, if we have questions on April 2nd, that will give Craig and the staff time to get back with those questions for the 9th meeting, the work session there. I just throw it out as an idea. It's what gives us?
Yeah, I like Mr. Brown's suggestion.
Two steps.
There's no, we don't necessarily have to answer every question, but it'll give, you know, if we come back on the 9th. We can have some questions answered, and then ask more, and then?
Yeah. Hey, everybody all right with that?
We do have to get PSA's information back out that it's changed.
Yes, sir. Well, we can do that tomorrow. If there's consensus there, we can have the PSA meeting scheduled for the 6th, and the budget work session will start. Do we have to set a time, or can we say immediately after the PSA?
I think you need to set a time.
I think we do, too.
6:30 or as soon thereafter. You got to set a minimum time if you can.
Okay, we could do that. Say the work session will start at 6:30, or as soon thereafter as the PSA meeting adjourns.
That way, they know it won't start any, any time prior to 6:30.
Okay.
It's going to be enough time for you, Chair, Eric. We haven't met on it yet, so I don't know what we've got, so.
We got to do?
I would imagine that, wouldn't we?
You got to do a C. That's an evaluation. Is that going to be a part of it?
Yeah.
That's personnel said.
We need a, we need a good hour, because we have a closed meeting.
Well, why don't we say PSA at 6:00, and say the work session will be at 7:00?
7:00.
And that way, if you get, if you were to get done at 6:45, you can at least have a little break. Right. That's fine.
All right.
We won't start at 7:00 no matter what, but.
Good.
Okay.
Okay.
I will, one more thing I wanted to add that I thought about while you were talking. I did get an email back from Delegate Yost today. They are, of course, back in Richmond, working on a budget. I did not hear today if the Senate came forward with a vote on what was proposed, but there appears to be some progress. Maybe that's too strong a word. There appears to be some movement.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry, wrong choice of word.
We're bad.
So, maybe, just maybe, I doubt we'll have anything by next Monday, but maybe by the 9th, we'll come, we'll have a better idea of what the state's going to do to us, I mean, provide for, so.
Due to the?
That was correct.
That was correct.
I'm sorry.
That's all I have.
All right. Supervisor Brown?
No report.
Supervisor Biggs?
Yes, I just wanted to take a minute to recognize a life well-lived by one of the citizens that lived in my district and was a county resident for many years. On March 17th, Casey Jones died at the age of 50, and he was beloved husband, father, son, friend, and the PE teacher for Kips Elementary School. In his position as a PE teacher and also referee at various sports activity, he impacted hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of children in our school system, in our county, in such a positive manner. This was evidenced at his memorial service last Friday evening at Pricesfork Elementary School, which was packed by the banners that the children had made and signed for his family, and the cards that they had written to him. And so, I just want his family, his friends, and the staff and students at Kips Elementary School to know that my heartfelt condolences and sympathies go out to him, or to his family and to his many friends. And this, whenever you lose a teacher like that, it's a sudden thing. He did teach on Friday, and he passed away that Saturday morning totally unexpectedly, sort of like Mr. Wells did, but at age 50. So, I just wanted to bring that up tonight, and I will also add that having the Pricesfork Elementary School as the venue for his memorial service was a very, very nice thing to do. And that's it.
Ms. Perkins?
No report.
Supervisor Creed?
No report.
Supervisor Tuck?
Well, as usual, I have a report. First, I'd like to commend Ruth. If anyone read the run-up times on Saturday, they noticed our grade went from a D to a B, and she is the one who picked up on their errors, and she is the one who put that forward, and I'd like to thank her for doing that. Second, one of the issues that I ran on when I ran was trying to see if we could save the current Auburn Middle School. It is slated at this time to be torn down in order to comply with state law as far as green space. I believe that Reiner is going to be one of their areas of growth, and I thought that we would be able to utilize that building again, but we needed to think of some creative ways to be able to save it. I talked to some educators who said the building is one of the open school designs, which I went to at Harding Avenue Elementary School, which is not a great design, but I can tell.
Uh-huh. Uh-huh. That's an editorial opinion comment.
Okay, fair enough. And as someone who went to school there, I think some of the walls would have been nice to have occasionally in some of the places.
Maybe you were difficult to contain.
Probably so. That's probably why I ended up getting sent to private school. But anyway, so I went ahead, and I, after doing that, I started still, I asked Craig for some numbers, and Craig was very helpful, and said, "Look, the county isn't looking to see a lot of growth in students out there." But again, I'm stubborn, and I continued to press on, and I started talking with Jim a little bit, and saying, "How could we come up with roughly, we need about five acres to be able to comply with that state law?" I also started talking to school board members, because as much as I'd like to think it's the county's property, it's actually the school board's property, and being able to try to save that building, you'd have to work with the school board. Many of the school board members didn't think it was necessarily a great idea because going back to what the educator said. But there was something really more important, and this is something that Jim touched on. Many years ago, when we went to the landowners outside of Reiner, we went to them, and we basically took their lands in order for a public use. And those individuals were told, and in Reiner for 10 years, that we would not take any more of their land, wouldn't even ask them. But there was also a handshake deal, and that handshake deal was, "We won't even come back and ask you anymore. We won't do this. Forget what's in Reiner." To me, a handshake is very important. I put out some feelers to the family, and was told that they still, you know, it's hard to lose part of your family farm, and that they were not interested in any way, shape, or form. After getting that, I think I have to put that to bed. I don't think that that's going to be an area that we can do. I'm a big believer in, you shake a man's hand, you follow up doing that. And so, I wanted to report that, that that's one of the things along with the budget that I've been working on to try to address. I am working with Penny Franklin a little bit on seeing the school board utilize the current Blacksburg High School Christiansburg, I mean, Blacksburg Middle School Christiansburg campus, and see that be used as an elementary school potentially in the future. So, that's my report, but thanks for the information, Craig.
Absolutely.
Mr. Biggs? Ask Mr. Gabriel.
Just a, just a few things. I attended the school board meeting on the 20th, and just a couple of things. They adopted the calendar, and there's some budget updates. One of the things that they are concerned about is the VRS, the 5% VRS contribution with the resulting pay raise will impact their budget to the tune of about $140, extra thousand. So they're wondering how they're going to deal with that. They also adopted a redistricting proposal to, for public hearing, and if any of your constituents ask it, will be on April the 3rd. I don't have the time here. I believe it was 7:00, but I can check on that if anybody has any questions. Basically, it's the modified 1B proposal, but with all of Brush Mountain removed from redistricting and kept in their same schools. But actually, something that Mr. Tuck just mentioned, the proposal that was given to, by DeJonge to this school, to the school board, had alternative scenarios, which didn't go forth to the, to the redistricting committee, but are on the table for future use, and a lot of them had to do with places outside of Blacksburg, such as what the costs, for example, would be involved in repurposing Christiansburg Middle to an elementary school, dealing with issues in Shawsville-Nelton, as well as some stuff in Reiner there. So, that, those things are on the table for the future, but they're not planning on doing anything right now. And so, that's, that's all with that. The second thing that I wanted to mention is I'm glad that we're doing this budget work session, you know, coming up, and I think, you know, the more conversations we can have, I think, I think generally the better. I think it would be useful, and I would suggest that maybe we could have one of those work sessions before we actually set the advertised tax rate, so that we can, we can have kind of more in-depth discussions, so we can, before we kind of lock ourselves into, into that. So I would suggest maybe we could, we could talk about that, once this is all settled and some time in the future for the next budget season. And then finally, I mentioned this before, and I'll just mention it one more time. I unfortunately won't be able to be here for the public hearing on Thursday. I will be traveling. I'll be in Tennessee, but I will absolutely be watching the video and be taking notes, and I encourage any, anyone and everyone to get in touch directly with me over email or by phone if they have any specific comments directed for me.
And I have no report this evening. There's no further business. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Mr. Gabriel?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.